Yeah.
Yeah, I think we were on the phone.
That's a guy.
Remember him?
You know my third monitor now.
Exactly.
He did more than one.
Yep.
Paul, we should be live.
All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, December the 22nd, public meeting in Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us today. I'll go ahead and call this meeting over. The first thing we'll do is approve the agenda. Mr. Knowles, are any additions, corrections, or changes to the public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second agenda is approved by mutual consent. Every copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting. Is there any distance corrections, questions, concerns for minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second minutes are approved by mutual consent. We do have a very light agenda today. Mostly, we did postpone this meeting from last week to this week in order to try to have more information available to the public in regard to the vaccine. We do have with us again on this call, the Garrett County Health Department and Bob Stevens to give us an update on that. Bob, we appreciate you joining us again today. And thank you for attending. And what can you tell us in regard to COVID-19 and an update and what's going on with the vaccine?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, and appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to get information out about COVID-19. I know that there's a lot of people have a lot of questions and concerns. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about the status of where we are, talk about some of our operations, and then really get into the vaccine. And then feel free, if you have any questions, you can ask me those questions. I'd be happy to try to answer them. I certainly don't have the answers to all the questions. So you, those who follow us on the website, whether it's Maryland Department of Health or Garrett County Health Department website or CDC, you can see that our positivity rate today is 15.3%. That's twice, you know, what the state is. And so that means that a little over 15% of the people that we test, test positive. And so the regular testing that's going on in Garrett County, that includes all the long-term care facilities, the hospital tests a lot of their staff. We're certainly testing some of our staff, and then there's the general public that either they have symptoms or they're coming through our drive-through and checking on that. And so that's one metric we always look at. The other metric, and we are third in this, from the worst in the state right now. And but I can say we're the best in Western Maryland because Allegheny and Washington County are ahead of us. The same is true for our seven-day rolling positivity rate. We're at 75.3%, which is about twice, almost exactly twice, what the state's is, which is 38.5. And that puts us fourth in the state. There were times where we were, you know, one or two. And most of the time, we were number two in the state as far, and that's not a good, that's not a good number two, that's a bad one. And but I can say that, you know, the last few days has been the first time since November 18th that we were below 80 per 100,000, and we've been below 80 for, I think, the last three or four days. We've had 36 deaths in the county. And those deaths, 80, the average age is 85 years old. 75% of those or 27 are in, were in long-term care facilities. But there are nine people that were not in long-term care facilities. So it is not all people that are in long-term care facilities that affects everyone. And we certainly, you know, we, most people know somebody who's passed away and, you know, we're, we, you know, want, especially during this time, keep them in our thoughts and prayers during this season. What happened with all this is kind of not unexpected. Because what happened was, if everybody remembers, up until September, we had the best case rate in the state and some of the best case rates on the, on the East Coast, with the exception of Maine and Vermont. And Allegheny County was also very good, too. We, our cases doubled in October and went into, and so we went into double digits in October for the first time. Then we went into triple digits in November for the first time. And then we stayed up in those triple digits, you know, up until, you know, just a few weeks ago. The, we had our first, there was only one death before November. We had seven deaths in November. So what happens is about two weeks, and I don't have the, I don't have the hospital's capacity today, I just realized that I didn't bring that. But what happens is your case rates go up. Two to three weeks later, your hospitalization numbers go up. Two to three weeks later, your deaths go up. If they go, if they go down, then two to three weeks later, then your number of hospitalizations will go down, and two to three weeks later, your deaths will go down. And so again, we had seven deaths in November. We had 13 the first week of December, 10 the second week of December, and so far, and we had five last week. There may have been one or two more last week because all those, because this is just the 22nd. So, you know, the 15th to the 21st was last week. So we're not out of the woods yet. Some of the things that we're doing, I just want to emphasize that we're trying to test people as much as positive as possible. You know, I've mentioned before, I think last week was that the, the hospital did a great job and some of the providers in doing a lot of the testing early on. We've had to, we've had to pick that up. And so Monday through Friday, we have testing here for people who are symptomatic, and they must call to get, to get an appointment, and they must register to get that appointment. And we only have a limited number, and they can come here to the Health Department. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have testing that's for anybody because you've come in contact with somebody, or if you're, you're in a business environment that where, you know, that other people have tested positive. You know, we had that testing today, and, you know, I noticed there was one local small company. But I know they had like seven or eight people, probably, they probably only have 10 people that work for them, and they probably had seven or eight that came through. So you think maybe somebody there had a positive, and so everybody else started coming through to see. And so we encourage people, you know, to find out if they're positive. It takes about two days to get that back. It's best to register, and you can register by going to our website. And, you know, and when I, I always have to give credit where credit's due, this is a team effort. We have more, we have more staff there today from the Board of Education. They were our school nurses that were there than we do from the Health Department. We had, we had four people from Emergency Management, those are county people, that were there. And I think we only had three or four people from the Health Department there. And because we just, we just could not keep up with the, with all the things that we're trying to do with contact raising, trying to get our vaccine plans together and doing all those things. And then we also had, we also have volunteers today. We actually had a semi-retired physician came and volunteered his time today. And that was, it was wonderful to see him there. So I encourage people to get tested because one of the things, if you can get diagnosed quickly and then you can begin to isolate yourself, that's the best thing to do. The, I'm going to say, I'm going to talk about, you know, what's, what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks before, before I get the vaccine. And vaccine is going to happen in the next couple of weeks, at least it's going to start to roll out slowly. The, everybody, you know, they were concerned, you know, with November being Thanksgiving, you know, and that the cases went up after that, and they really went up across the country. You know, we saw our surge more, you know, after what I want to call Autumn Glory, you know, and that, that time, we saw more of our people coming, coming in during that time. And we saw our surge right, right before Thanksgiving. And, and then, but, you know, the thing is, is everybody wants to have their holidays with their friends and their family. And it is, it's very hard to, to say, you know, I have this holiday tradition, and I'm always with my family. And, you know, we're just not going to do it. And that's the case, you know, with, with my family. I had to, you know, make my, make some, actually text, texted members of the family and said, you know, we're, we're not going to get together this year. You all can, you know, but for Christmas, we're going to drop off presents, and we'll have a Zoom meeting, and we'll try to do that because we, we need to stay safe. Because what happens is the more people you have in a confined room, in confined area, the higher your chances are. So if you must get together, you really need to wear the face covering. You know, that really makes a big difference. Some people, I've heard people say that they don't think the face covering works. They say, I don't believe that. I've heard of people that have it. And I will tell you, you know, we've had, we've had some people here at the Health Department who have, who have had the, who have been diagnosed with COVID. But there's one department in the Health Department that wears masks all the time. And that's our dental clinic. And to date, we have not had anybody in our dental clinic, even though they are working on patients who do not have face masks on. And, you know, the face coverings work, you know, they are not 100%, but they, they work. You know, so anecdotally, we know it works, and, you know, looking at the data, it works, looking at the science, it works. And so we do know that if you take them off to eat or drink or whatever, just for, just for a little bit of time, that's, that's a break in your personal protective equipment, and so something can happen with that. So I'm going to transition now and talk a little bit about the vaccine. Again, you know, the, the thing with COVID is it has really affected the older population, you know, a lot more than it has the younger population. We can, we can tell when we see these death reports, you know, we know that it's, we see the ages and we can see the other conditions. You know, most of the people have other conditions along with the fact that they're older. But we do have some people that don't have other conditions. You know, they're, you know, mid-60s and they, you know, they get it, and they didn't have anything else before. And they had a bad outcome, they either ended up in the ICU or ended up dying. But, but for the most part, there's very, very high-risk people. The older you are and the more other underlying health conditions you have, the more high-risk you are. And so those are the people we want to take care of. So, so what's happening? We know that Garrett Regional received their first 100 doses yesterday, and they set up their, I think they were vaccinating people today. They may have even vaccinated a few yesterday, but they're going to go through that first 100 doses. And then they're waiting to see what they're, what else will be delivered to them. And so they're going to want to reach out to, you know, some of the other, some of their other clinics and people that are within their sphere, you know, to use those doses. And then the, we also know that the long-term care facilities are being taken care of through CVS and Walgreens. And those, I, you know, I talked to the medical director of one of those facilities today. They're not really sure when they're going to receive those, but they think that that, that should be, they should be getting those vaccines for their staff and their residents very shortly. And I'm going to indicate that their staff are getting it first, and then, then their, their patients. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why that is. We're also at the Health Department, we're receiving, supposed to be receiving 100 doses that will probably come in Christmas Eve. And with those doses, then the reason why we're getting 100 is that every Health Department in the state got 100 doses. So a lot of the larger jurisdictions, they thought, didn't think that was fair. But that's just to see if we could set up the system to get them in and distribute. Then after that, they'll be given out pro rata, which in other words means based on your population. So, you know, Baltimore County, Montgomery County, they're going to get a whole lot more doses than we do. I think because we, we can take advantage of the, the fact that we're smaller, that I think our, it's more manageable what we can do and that we can get the vaccine out in a thoughtful manner that really protects the most people. And so I want to use, I've been thinking about an illustration of how to, to explain why we're doing what we're going, what we're doing. So if you can imagine that if there was a, if there was, if you're on a boat, and there were a lot of people on this boat, you know, maybe a ferry, you know, you're 100 yards from, you're 100 yards from shore, and it sinks. And while it's sinking, you have to make a decision. What are you going to do with your, with your one rowboat? And then what are you going to do with your, you know, your 25 personal flotation devices? And then what are you going to do, you know, with everybody else? Because you don't have 100, you don't have 100 of them. What are you going to do? Well, you find out on your ferry, you have somebody who is an Olympic rower, and that person is the person that's going in the rowboat. It doesn't matter if that person can swim, or they might be the best swimmer in the group, but you're putting them in the rowboat because they can save other people's lives. And so that's, those are the people that we want to be vaccinated first. And so that's healthcare providers, EMS providers, people who are, are giving the vaccine out. And then, you know, making sure that, that, you know, they're, they're going to take care of everyone else. Now, it's not all, not all healthcare providers, we can say it's not going to be that every, everybody that works in a medical office is going to get it in this first round. What it's going to be is those people who are the most critical. So if you have a physician, a primary care physician, and they got COVID, whether they die or not, or whether they go in an ICU or hospitalized or not, for 10 days, that doctor's not going to be able to see anybody. And that's going to be a problem because they're, they're not going to be able to help solve this problem. So that's why we have to prioritize the people who are addressing the situation. Okay, with this, with using the boat illustration some more, then you find, you find out, okay, you got these PFDs, life jackets, you know, that you need to give out. Well, you're going to find, you're going to say, well, you know, who are, who are the non-swimmers? And we have 15 people who are non-swimmers. You say, well, these 15 people, they have absolutely no chance of, of living and surviving this if they don't get these life jackets. So you give that to them. Then you have, then you look at the people who are, you know, they're okay swimmers, and you decide, we're going to give those people more life jackets. And then you get down to the, the point where, okay, hopefully, we found some more life jackets to give them to everybody, but we're going to prioritize those people who are most at risk. And so that's what, that's what we're doing. Again, you know, we're looking at hospital, hospital staff, EMS staff, staff that are, that are directly, you know, working with the community. So I told you that, you know, in our testing site and as part of our vaccine, we have school nurses and paramedics that are giving vaccine and doing testing. They're going to be in our, our first, in our first cohort. You know, I, you know, my wife is a teacher. She's not going to be in that first cohort because she can be, she could be the best teacher in the world, but she's not going to be in that first cohort because she's not addressing the problem. And so we're going to go to that next. And then we want to go to those, we also want to go to people who are in very high-risk professions and support staff, and we're going to work our way down. And so when we do that, we really want to do that in a thoughtful way. And I think I said this the last time I was with you, that we are not going to have a situation where, where we say the Garrett County Health Department received 500 doses and every, and we're going to give them out to the first 500 people that, that drive into our parking lot. That's, that's just not going to happen. You know, we're not going to, it's not going to be the Garrett County Health Department received 500 doses, and we're going to give it to the first 500 people that register. That's not going to be it either. We're going to work with our, with our partners. We're going to go through this thoughtfully, in a thoughtful manner, and say, you know, where do they need to go? And our partners, who are really primary care physicians and physicians who, who know their patients well and say, these are, these are the people that if, if my medical practice only had 10 cases, 10 doses, I would want to give it to these 10 people because if they get it, they're, I have a bad feeling that they're going to end up in the hospital or the ICU. And then they'll say, well, you know, but my, my best friend is also, you know, in, in the practice, and he's 50 years old and healthy, but he's my best friend. Well, go give it to your best friend. You know, that person's probably going to be okay. Because what we, what we know from COVID is the more complications you have, the more high-risk you are. So, so that's how it's going to go. And, you know, we, we, one of the things I've, I've thought about is that my, I have a brother who, who has spent a lot of time in third-world countries. And he said, one thing that people in third-world countries don't do well is they don't stand in line, and they don't, you know, line up in queues. They, and if you see that, if there's a food distribution, you see everybody jump, run around the back of the truck, and at first, it's a bunch of little kids. And then before you know it, it's all the big guys and all the bullies that jump in. And it's this, you know, this chaos. You know, what we're relying on is that, you know, we as a community, we have a great community, and we have people that will be able to say, you know, I absolutely want my, want to get in the vaccine when it's my turn, because everybody is at slight risk. Some people are at very high risk, but we want those very high-risk people to be kind of put in the front of the line. And we, and I, you know, I believe as a community that we can do that. That, you know, we're not going to have too many people who are demanding that they get, get their turn. The, the final thing I just want to say is that, is talk about the vaccine a little bit. So right now, the, the two vaccines that are out is the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine, and they're in two doses. They are, it's a new process. And it's called mRNA. And, you know, if, if you remember back to high school, you remember that there's DNA and RNA. RNA was ribonucleic acid, so it's just, and what the M stands for is messenger. And so these are vaccines that are unlike any vaccines that have really been created before. The, what, what they do is they create a spike protein. So they do not, most other vaccines that have been developed have the virus in them, whether it's a dead virus or it's a, it's a, you know, a virus that is not quite as infectious. It's, it's been, it's live, but it's been, you know, made safe. This has, does not have the virus in it. What it's like is this email that your, your body is getting that says, hey, COVID's on the way, you need to get your immune system jacked up in order to fight this thing off. And so it has that, this messenger RNA. And then in the, in the Pfizer formulation, it has three other, it has three other ingredients. One is an, one is an oil that, and that's to help it, you know, get into the cell. And it's an oil that's fairly common. There is a salt, which is not unlike table salt, and there's sucrose, which is sugar. So you have those three things, you know, it, of course, it's going to have, you know, the long scientific name for them, but basically, those, those are the ingredients. And so, you know, those are, you know, it, it's not going to be like some of the other vaccines that we, we do know that over the, the vaccines used to look as, look, you know, to people as they were a real blessing. Because we used to have things like, you know, whooping cough and rubella and different things like that, different diseases that create, that when, when women were pregnant, they were just, they were afraid they were going to get rubella because it created birth defects. And we had all these, we had lots and lots of birth defects. And we had polio, and we had all these different things. Well, the vaccines that were created for that, a lot of the times, they had preservatives in them. These vaccines do not have any preservatives in them. That a lot of people don't get vaccines because they've had allergic reactions in the past. These vaccines, a lot of people, it's because the vaccines are grown with, with eggs. There's, that's not in, that's not in this because, again, it's this messenger RNA that, that's involved. So it is, it is a new vaccine, and, you know, we, everybody, under an emergency use authorization, people should be, should do their research and be concerned about it. One of the things I'll say is that anything, any, any vaccine and anything you get, you're going to hear of people that will say, well, they had a reaction to. And, and there can always be, there can always be a reaction. And so, you know, it's really taking a, a look at the benefits associated to the risk. And every time we get in a car, we're, we're making that decision. When we turn that, the key of that ignition is, is it worth my, the, I'm taking a slight chance that I'm going to go out on a highway, and there could be a drunk driver on that highway, or something could happen, could go wrong, and I could be in a terrible accident. Or, you know, I think it's, I think it's safe for me to, to drive. And so we, we take those calculated risks all the time. And, and so, you know, we need to look at that. And, you know, and I would encourage people to, you know, do the research themselves, look at the science, look at the data, watch, watch the people who are being vaccinated before you, and then make that decision. You know, our, our hope is that we will get to that, what's called herd immunity. Because if we can get to that, then that's, the faster we get to that, then the faster we're going to be able to return to normal. If, if we don't have the, with, without this vaccine and without the, the, the the virus going completely through the population, you know, we're going to be wearing masks, face masks for a long time. And, you know, the governor is going to have restrictions on, on restaurants and different things like that. And we're not going to be able to do the things that we want to do. So the, the best thing, if, if you're sick and tired of doing this, then do the research. And when it's your turn, just make an informed decision whether you want to get that vaccine or not. Current, when it first starts, there's not going to be enough vaccine to keep up with the demand. And that's why we're going through this kind of stage process. Eventually, the vaccine, you know, sometime later this spring, or maybe in the summer, you're, you will be able to go to your doctor, go to CVS or wherever and say, I want the vaccine. I didn't feel like I, I didn't want it in March, because, or I didn't want it in February because, you know, it was too new and, and, but then, you know, but now in July, I've seen that, you know, nobody else is having these terrible reactions. Now it's my time. So, you know, I really want people to, you know, think about that. Look at the data, look at the research, you know, look in, in articles that are, you know, scientific in nature, and, and, and go by that. The other, and the last thing I'm going to say, because I've really been talking for a long time here, is, you know, talk to people who are in the know in the community. Do your own research. Again, with, whether that's with the vaccine, or whether you believe in, you know, that COVID is as bad as what it is. You know, talk to, if you, if you don't, if you say, well, I don't think people were dying any more than, than they normally do. Talk, talk to a funeral director, that's, talk to a doctor. Say, you know, are you having more patients that are dying now than, than what previously? Talk to, talk to people who are in the know. Do your own research and your own observation. Do your own research and your own observation. And and so really want to encourage everybody and really, you know, the advantage of being on here with the with all of you is that knowing that there are people that view this and then they sometimes share it on Facebook or whatever. And so, you know, we're trying, we just want to get out as much accurate information as possible. So that we can get through this so that we can get back to normal. And that's what everybody wants is to get back to normal. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
Do I have any questions, Bob? Thank you. Hey, Bob, just real quick, a recent development, I think from yesterday with the announcement of a new strain that's out there. At least in England and and probably other places. Any any comment on that or too soon to tell or anything you'd like to share about that?
I wish I, yes, I have heard about of that. And I've seen some things in the news on it. And, you know, it is certainly certainly cause for concern. I don't have any real additional information. I've been I was out at a test site all day today. I, you know, I wasn't checking out the the research or anything like that. You know, and so I I probably know about as much as you know, or maybe I don't know quite as much about that. But it certainly is a concern.
Any other questions for Bob? All right, well, thank you very much as always for your time and for coming on and sharing all that information with the citizenry. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Hey, Bob, one thing real quick, there is no testing Thursday down to Mexico building, is that correct?
That's correct. On on Christmas Eve, there will be no testing at our site. What one of the things I did forget to mention is that we're trying to have additional testing here. And the state has provided a nurse, a contract nurse that has been deployed here until March. And so she's gonna she's gonna help us do some more testing here and may be able to help us out with vaccine. You know, most of the other counties in the state have had that type of support and had entire teams or whatever. We are a small county, so proportionally having one person, that's a that's a big help. Just getting one extra person to help is is a big, big thing. So we're gonna try to do some more of that. So if somebody has a signs and symptoms and they have some type of concerns, they can call the Health Department. Go to the go to our website, garrethealth.org, look up the number, call in, try to get an appointment. Because we will be doing appointments on on Thursday. But then again, it's gonna be limited.
Thank you. That's good information. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is announcements. I would like to announce that our next meeting is Monday, January the fourth, twenty twenty one. So we'll be online again for that. I want to remind everyone, if you're watching, we are actually on Zoom, not on Facebook. So if you're making comments on Facebook, I know this is being broadcast on Facebook, we don't see them. If you have comments or questions, please send them to gccomments@garettcounty.org. We did get a couple of of emails to that from last meeting to this meeting. One of them, a couple of them in regard to the allegation of a racial incident in Limpopo. And I'm sure a lot of people have heard about and seen in media and social media and all of that. Can't really comment specifically on that incident because it is an ongoing investigation. But I would like to say we are aware. And I think I speak for this board when I say that this Board of Commissioners vehemently disavows all forms of hate and racism. And the sheriff is investigating that incident and has solicited the help of the state's attorney and the state police in that investigation. And we look forward to seeing that report. And want to again say that all are welcome here. And, you know, certainly don't want to see any any more incidents such as that. And more to come from the Sheriff's Department. Also, I guess that's all that I have. Does anybody have anything else? Any comments or? Yeah, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we look forward to seeing everybody in twenty twenty one. Thank you all very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned, thank you.